For an apology, we have run into some technical difficulties and are unable to get the live stream up and running. So we will, we will be posting this meeting to our YouTube channel as soon as we get the technical difficulties straightened out. So our first order of business is our land acknowledgement. And I would like to begin by acknowledging that we are in Mi'kmaqie and the District of Sabaginagadi, the ancestral and unceded territory of the Mi'kmaq people. Next is a moment of silent contemplation. All right, next I would be looking for the approval of or amendments to the agenda.
I'll move second.
Moved by councillor Green, seconded by councillor Musa, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion is carried. Next item is the approval of the minutes of March ninth, two thousand and twenty-one, regular meeting of council for policy and March the twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-one, regular meeting of council.
So moved.
Moved by councillor Mitchell, seconded by the deputy warden, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion is carried. Next item is correspondence for information. You see it before you, does any councillor have any item they wish to raise from correspondence for information? Seeing none, the correspondence is there and the, for your information, so seeing no one having any questions on that, we would move to correspondence for decision. And the first item is a letter from the returning officer for Hans East with elections Nova Scotia, who has reached out to municipal staff looking to rent space to support the provincial election. And I just lost my screen at the Nova Centre. The letter is before you. I don't know.
He can speak to this, Madam Warden.
Pardon?
Kate can speak to this one.
Okay, Kate.
There is a briefing note that accompanied this that Amy prepared after meeting with the, the returning officer. And I think it answers most of the questions that council may have, so certainly they are looking for a temporary location for the, for whenever the writ is dropped for the election. They have looked at the facility, feel that this will suit their needs. And, you know, are quite prepared to take it as is and for a yet to be negotiated and confirmed, but understand that it would be in the approximate order of about four thousand dollars a month.
Hey, does anyone have any, Deputy Warden?
Mr. You, Madam Warden, does that, is that ref cost comparable to what the spot would be at the market value?
How we came to that amount was really covering the expenses related to the operation of the building. We didn't, when we negotiated with the school district, the we, we agreed that we would make sure that we were covering off our costs associated with them being in the building and that is the same approach we've used here.
Just quickly supplemental, it costs us four thousand dollars a month to operate half of that building?
Yes, in during the winter months and snow clearing and everything else, so yes, it's expensive.
I would say, well, I honestly don't like the amount, it should be more, but I guess I'll move staff recommendation.
I'll second that.
Okay, moved by the deputy warden, seconded by councillor Mitchell, is there any further discussion? Question's been called. And in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Contrary?
Nay.
The motion is passed. Councillor Rhino voting nay, and I didn't see anyone else vote nay, did I? Okay, thank you. Next item, we are requiring a temporary borrowing resolution to borrow from Municipal Finance Corporation for the active transportation on Highway two fourteen. You have it in front of you, this is simply the authorization that staff need to go ahead and Deputy Warden.
I don't have to read all that, right? I can just move staff's recommendation.
Move the attached resolution.
Move, I'll move the attached resolution.
And the pre-approval tomorrow.
And the pre-approval to borrow.
Well, there's recommendations. Sorry, yeah. Thank you. I thought it was.
Moved by the deputy warden, seconded by councillor Green, is there any discussion? Councillor Musa.
Yeah, with, with the double of the gas tax money, wouldn't be there any money to use for that from the gas tax?
So this particular project, Jesse has gone out to get to hopefully succeed in getting federal and provincial funding. And that won't allow us to use gas tax for this particular project. So it's our hope that Jesse will be successful. And we need this to move forward in order to finalize the funding from the federal government. And what we can do is at a later date, once the funding's in place, if there's an opportunity to use other sources of funding, such as some reserves, we'll bring that back to council for approval.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Question.
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion is passed unanimously. Next item, Federation of Canadian Municipalities Annual Conference, which is virtual again this year, running from May thirty-first to June fourth, and we are being asked to select our delegates. And once again, since there will be no travel involved, I think we certainly have budget for anyone who is interested in going to register. When do we need to have those folks share a lead? Do we need to do this tonight or?
The deadline is May fourteenth for the early bird rate. So it would be prior to your next meeting. If you, if you would prefer, if those that are interested just wanted to contact me directly, then we can, we can still do that and do a ratification at May council, if you prefer, similar to what we're going to do later tonight for the NSFM Spring Workshop.
Okay. I, I'm not sure how the virtual conference is going to work. I'll see how we may go with NSFM, but at this point in time, I think I would probably be able to take that in. Does anyone else know that they're interested at this time? And if not, I would suggest that you, you know, think about it and contact Shirley, you have a preferred date, Shirley, to give you time to do the registration?
At least a couple of days before, so maybe by the twelfth of May would be.
Of May?
Would be great, that's a Wednesday.
Okay. Is that okay with you folks?
I looked at your agenda, wasn't too pleased with it, so.
All right. So anyone decides they are interested, please let Shirley know by the twelfth of May. Next item, municipal funding for libraries. Now, the province has increased funding levels for libraries and I believe are asking municipalities to do the same, I don't know. Is anyone on staff to take this one? Okay. We have Norval and we have Mike and we have Kim, so who's it gonna be?
I can do an intro if you like, Madam Chair, just with some history. The province did come to municipalities for two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one, and suggests that we increase the funding and municipalities at that point in time suggested that there wasn't enough consultation and that they wanted municipal consultation and the twelve-month notice prior to looking at that. At that point, the members of the library board on our council brought it to our council and said, would we be able to fund them for that amount in two thousand and twenty-one, for the increased amount? Two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one? At that point, our council said, we will if the other units do as well. And not all of the other units were prepared to do that for two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one. So we're fast forwarded a year and we're in the same position. So I know Turo has decided to do the funding. I'm, I didn't have a chance to check back with Colchester to see if they made a decision, but perhaps the councillors on the library board could weigh in on that.
And councillor Mitchell?
Yes, thank you, Warden. The library board met last evening and dealing with this issue, it came, it came forward, as Kim says, the town of Turo, Colchester County, and it looks like the town of Stuick are all going to go ahead with a new funding level for twenty-one, twenty-two. So it's just up to Eastants is the only one to confirm what they're going to do.
So we're looking at approximately a seven thousand dollar increase over the prior funding model.
And that we did.
That's only a quarter, Madam Chair.
Per quarter, yes, yeah.
I think the official amount's around twenty-seven thousand for the year.
And, and Madam Warden, we did budget for the increase in this year's budgets.
So I guess I'm going to ask, what is council's intent here? Is someone prepared to move that we move to the new funding level? And then we can have some discussion, councillor Mitchell.
I'm prepared to move it, move to the new funding level for twenty-one, twenty-two with the increase.
We have a second. A move by councillor Mitchell, seconded by councillor Perry, is there any discussion on the motion?
Question.
Question has been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion is carried. That concludes business or correspondence for decision. We are slightly past the time of the heritage registration hearing. Do you want to go to that now and then return to the to the agenda so that we, I realize we have no public in attendance, but I think it's perhaps we should follow the time on the agenda for that hearing, what are your thoughts?
You're the warden, I'm fine with them going to.
Agreed.
Okay, so I'm guessing that would be you, John?
Yes, no, that would be, I believe that councillor Green, am I correct?
I'm at John Woodford.
No, it's Rachel's going to take us through it, Madam Warden.
Yeah, okay. And.
There.
Yeah, do you want me to bring up the script?
Yes, please. Okay, councillors, this evening we have one item on the hearing agenda scheduled to begin at seven thirty. The purpose of this hearing is for council to hear input from the property owner prior to making a decision on the request. Tonight, council may approve, reject or defer its decision on the request to a later date. Council approval is required for the registration to proceed. I will now ask the municipal clerk to outline when the notice was sent to the property owner.
And I'm more going to note, Madam Warden, a notice of recommendation for registration as a municipal heritage property was served upon the owner of the two cemetery properties more than thirty days prior to this hearing. The notice gave the date, time and how they can participate in the hearing. The hearing was to be livestreamed tonight. And the recording of this hearing will be put on the municipal website and YouTube.
And councillors, on the hearing scheduled this evening is a request by the West Gore Cemetery Association slash trustees or the West Gore Cemetery to register the cemetery as a municipal heritage property. I would now ask the Chair of the Planning Advisory Committee to present his report.
Thank you, Warden. Planning Advisory Committee has considered the request on behalf of municipal council. The committee has reviewed staff's reports, completed their evaluation and will make a recommendation to council during this hearing. Madam Warden, through you, I would now ask staff to present their final report on the request.
Okay, Madam Warden. So the application's been received to register the West Gore Cemetery as a municipal heritage property. You can see the photograph there of the cemetery. Based on an assessment of the property, staff are recommending that the property be added to the registry of municipal heritage properties. Some photographs taken during the winter. The list of people provided by the applicant has been included at the end of the application form in appendix B of the staff report. The applicant has indicated that the first interment was pre-conciliation in eighteen fifty, based on information on the present headstones. Although the cemetery in West Gore does not tell the story of more regional or provincial interest, the people buried in the cemetery and their stories are of importance to the community and the protection of the cemetery helps to protect the history of that community. Heritage registration would enable access to the limited grant fund, the heritage incentive program. Staff have assigned a score of fifty-seven. Minimum score of fifty points should be attained to be considered for registration. Staff support and recommend approval of the registration of the cemetery as it began to be used pre-conciliation and it does form part of the history of the community. Thank you, Madam Warden.
Thank you. I, if we could have the script put back up, please. Does any member of council have questions for staff? Councillor Knockwood and followed by the deputy warden.
I was just wondering, how many more cemeteries you do have in the municipality before eighteen sixty-seven? Any, would it be all lined up, become a historical site?
Through Mr. What, I don't, I don't have that information. I do know that we have, this would be the third cemetery if this was to be registered as a municipal heritage property. We already have two other cemeteries, but I don't know the history of other cemeteries around the municipality.
Yeah, I just looked them all the history down from that way anyway, so, yeah. No, I'm just wondering because Eastants is an old shipping communities and all that stuff, you know? I just wondered, how many more graveyard do we have?
Very sure. Yeah, I'm sure there are many, many, many. And certainly we would look at each one if it were brought forward by the group looking after it. It would be looked at and scored similar to this one, so, but you're absolutely right. There, there are a lot and they do tell the history of the community, Rachel.
Through you, Madam Warden, just for council knock words information, the Oak Island Cemetery in Maitland was recent, recently registered as a municipal heritage property. And there's a lot of history in there with regards to the shipbuilding history of that, the North Shore. And that was one of the reasons that that cemetery was registered to kind of protect that history and, and to help tell the story of the history of that community. Thank you, Madam Warden.
Thank you.
Deputy Warden.
Thank you, Warden, just to you and staff, when we've brought forward the issue of insurance and that came to light. I'm just asking the, the applicant has been made aware that to ensure their insurance is okay?
Through you, Madam Warden, yes, we've had that discussion with the applicant and staff were directed or staff will have that discussion with any other future potential heritage property applicants prior to them submitting their application, so they'll be quite clear on some of the issues surrounding insurance. But we certainly did have that discussion with the applicants of this application.
Thank you very much, that's all, Warden.
Any other councillors have questions for staff? Seeing none, the representatives of the property owner were given the opportunity to participate this evening but have decided not to. Prior to the hearing, they did confirm that all directors of the West Gore Cemetery Cooperative voted that they support the registration. Does any member of staff have any final comments?
No, thank you.
I would now ask the Chair of Planning Advisory Committee to present his committee's recommendation.
Thank you, Warden. Planning Advisory Committee, as Heritage Advisory Committee recommends, that council approve the registration of the West Gore Cemetery located at PID number four five one four nine three one seven and PID number four five one two nine one 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 as a municipal heritage property, as Chair of PAC, I so move.
Definitely.
Moved and seconded. Are there any final questions or comments from municipal councillors? You ready for the question?
Question.
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Like, contrary, motion has passed unanimously. And that concludes tonight's hearing and thank you. So returning to our agenda where we left off, we are at the ratification of the NSFM Spring Workshop delegation. Over to you, Shirley.
Okay. So as you folks will recall, you received some emails about the upcoming NSFM Virtual Spring Workshop. And I did hear back from one councillor, the warden and the CAO who were interested in registering. So we had to go ahead and meet the deadline, so the registrations have been completed. And this motion is just to ratify that decision that council has selected the delegation as follows, and there is a motion on your screen as a recommendation.
Someone prepared to move that recommendation? Deputy Warden?
Move the council approved the following delegates for the two thousand and twenty-one vertical Nova Scotia Federation of Municipal Spring Workshop two thousand and twenty-one. Warden Alderman Ralston, councillor Norval Mitchell, Kim Ramsey, CAO, I so move.
Moved by the deputy warden, seconded by councillor Green, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion has passed unanimously. Next item, the East Hand Sportsplex Conditional Grant, Adam. Adam, we can't hear you. No.
No, we still can't hear you.
F four on your keyboard? No.
Do you want to try unplugging?
Madam Warden, I can take this one. Council had a discussion around providing a grant for the East Hand Sportsplex that was to be negotiated. We had direction from council to move forward with that. The motion on the table right now, or sorry, in front of you is to ratify the final amount that was worked out with the Sportsplex to support the costs associated with the repairs of the dome collapse in two thousand and nineteen. This money, the hundred and sixty-two thousand would be funded from the Sportsplex Reserve Fund that is collected through taxation of the Sportsplex area rate.
Someone prepared to move the motion? Deputy Warden?
Move the council provide the East Hand Arena Association with a conditional grant in the amount of a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars to support the cost associated with the repairs to the dome from the twenty nineteen collapse and that the funds be allocated from the Sportsplex Reserve, I so move.
Second. Sector, seconded by councillor Mitchell, and did you wish to speak to the motion, councillor Mitchell?
No, I'm just glad that that's getting cleared up.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion?
Question.
The question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Contrary, motion has passed unanimously. The next item, the Nova Scotia Remembers Memorial, and Adam is supposed to kickstart this one.
Madam Warden, is my microphone working?
Yes. Beautiful.
Great, thank you. I will kickstart this one for council tonight, good evening for the second time. So just a little bit of a recap. In June of two thousand and twenty, a letter was received to council from Mayor Blair of Colchester County regarding participating in a joint municipal committee to consider collaborating on a memorial to, for the victims of April eighteenth and nineteenth tragedy. The initial kickoff meeting didn't occur with the election, municipal election last fall, it was postponed until last week where the warden attended along with elected officials from Colchester County, Halifax Regional Municipality, Cumberland County, as well as various staff. So in front of you tonight, you have a little bit of a meeting summary of what happened in the course, and it was really an introductory preliminary meeting with the committee. And they discussed receiving input from all of the families that were impacted and trying to look at ensuring they were supportive of the initiative. The group discussed product scope and scale, but it really was not identified to any great length. And each municipality was asked to think about possible locations that they could bring back to the follow-up meeting, and council does have another motion on the books. That's C twenty-one twenty, where council, before this committee was, was struck, council asked staff to look at a a local area for memorial, and that was Wickwire Station Park. We haven't brought a staff report back on that motion as this committee has kind of superseded that to see where, where it went, so that motion's kind of waiting there. So council may consider offering that location to the committee. The last point was to confirm the elected official representative to attend the follow-up meeting. And staff are always available to support if council so chooses. So the discussion points for council tonight is how does council feel if not all families agree with the memorial as we go through this process? It's a very near and dear and sensitive topic to many, and there may be some perspectives where families may not wish for these events to have a memorial, so how does council feel should not everyone agree? The second point is scope and scale hasn't been identified, but does council want to provide an indication of what level of funding you may be comfortable with moving forward? You may choose not to, but to me also provide our municipal perspective of where you're at to contribute financially. And the last question is around the Wickwire Station Park, would you like that to be brought back to the table? There is a draft recommended motion there, but really there are those questions in front of council and the warden was in attendance, so I'll turn it back to the warden to to follow up with the chair.
Thank you, and I would pass the chair to Deputy Warden for this one. Yeah, it was as, as Adam said, excuse me, I have a tickle in my throat. It was a preliminary meeting. So the decision from that meeting was to strike a, and kind of an ad hoc. So the decision from that meeting was to strike a and kind of an ad hoc committee from from the municipalities to further discuss this. So we need to decide, I guess, first if we are interested in continuing with a, you know, participating in this multi-municipal memorial discussion. And the plan is also to involve the, I believe it's the Legacy Society that has formed, but they're also working toward a memorial. And and the plan is to reach out to them and and involve them. And if East Hands is interested in continuing to be a part of that group, whom do you want to represent you on that committee? I'm certainly willing to continue to do it if that's the wish of council. I'm a little uncomfortable not having some idea of, you know, the scope and dollars amount because, you know, we don't know yet of this, what what the cost of this is. So I would like to have some idea of how much council would be prepared to spend. But we don't know if this is going to be a $50,000 memorial or a $500,000 memorial at this point. We just don't know. And we don't know what other funding might come forward at some time in the future. And we can certainly offer Wickwire Station Park as an option. No idea, you know, perhaps the committee has other committee members have other places in mind as well. And the question did arise that what happens, you know, if if the families aren't all on board? And the discussion at the initial committee meeting was from at least one other municipality that if all families, if it wasn't unanimous, and if all families weren't on board, that they would not continue to participate and pursue this. And that would be my personal opinion as well. Because, you know, you may have families who think this is a wonderful memorial to their loved ones. And you might have families who would prefer to remember their loved ones privately without a reminder somewhere of of what did happen. So it's either difficult discussions on that, and I think just need to reach out to council and see what council's wishes around this. Thank you.
Thank you, Warden. I have Counselor Rhino and Counselor Perry wishing to speak, then Counselor Knockwood. Counselor Rhino, you have the floor.
There's no doubt this is a difficult issue, but I'm trying to wrap my head around what is the pressing issue, why it is here tonight and not taking place at the executive for further discussion.
Thank you, Counselor Rhino.
I could answer.
Go ahead, Warden. If you have the answer, go ahead.
At the meeting that we had last week, I believe it was, other municipalities at that time did indicate their their plan to continue. HRM, Mike Savage, indicated that he wasn't sure if it would be him, but he would appoint someone if it wasn't him. And so I did, perhaps you can scold me if you like, but I did tell the committee that we were meeting on Wednesday night and that I should perhaps have, you know, information from my council following the meeting tonight. So it's just simply because it was delayed and the one-year anniversary has passed. The committee wants to start the steps in looking at this, and this was the earliest opportunity that I had to bring it to council.
Counselor Rhino, anything else? You still on the floor?
Well, I guess, you know, at what time are you going to have another meeting with them? I I still think this was, should have been a a discussion left for the executive, executive committee unless there was a pressing timeframe to have this done.
Warden, do we have a schedule for the next day?
No, we do not, but Adam, I I know they are waiting to hear, Adam.
Yeah, just through you, Chair, the the committee had asked to respond within a week of who would be able to attend the follow-up meeting. And so that also contributed to coming forward to council tonight without that weak timeline.
Okay, so so Counselor Rhino, any other questions on that?
No.
So so it appears the pressing issue is whether we are going to proceed and have a person on to it. I have Counselor Perry and then Counselor Knockwood. Counselor Perry?
Thank you, Deputy Warden. No, I couldn't agree with the Warden more. The the one of the pressing issues is the family support. If the family members aren't unanimous, or a few of them don't want to take part in it, I'd have a hard time supporting something that that the family members, the grieving people left behind are are not in support of. I'm also a little unsure where it says a contribution amount up to without having a project scope. And I don't know if we need that amount tonight to go to the next meeting or not, but I think I do think we should be part of the meeting and we should talk about it, and we should look at what we're going to do in the future, but without any more parameters of where it's going, I'm I'm, I just don't know how to allocate funds that are available and and would make sense at this point without knowing what the scope is. But I am fully supportive of having the Warden represent us. I think she'll do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Perry. Counselor Knockwood?
Yeah, I agree with the Warden attending the meeting and and like I said, the family don't want it. They respect her wishes and and I think Shubanagety is having something down there to memorialize the victims also down there by Martinson Store down there. They work in Rex McCool's Park, but they're putting a monument up there.
Is is that a question? So, okay, all right. So Adam, would you be able to comment on that?
Yes, Mr. Chair, there is a Counselor Knockwood is correct. There is a local community group. I believe it is the Shubanakety Development Association that is doing something localized, and I'm not sure if it's for the full memorial or for the events that happened to a few in the local area, but there are some trails they are putting in in Rex McCool's Park as well, and that has already commenced. And that was a local kind of grassroots initiative to memorialize that.
So I think I think that'd be maybe maybe a better place in Wicker Station Park, I do believe, you know. Like I said, it's up to council, but you know, we have some victims down here in Shubanagety, so.
Well, if I could.
Go ahead, Warden.
I am, you know, we can offer wherever we want. We can't offer to allow them to put a memorial on land that we don't own. But the general discussion was that wherever it is decided to put this memorial would be in some type, I believe the word was neutral area. So I mean, there were, there were people who lost their lives over, you know, a large
Not that far.
Yeah, and so but those discussions are very preliminary and
Okay, I understand then.
That is Counselor Knockwood?
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, I'm going to go to Counselor Heav, and then I'll let you, then I'll get you, Counselor Rhino. Counselor Heav, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a question and some comments. Are we are we talking one memorial? Are we are we talking different ones or just one major big memorial?
Warden?
Well, Adam, correct me if I'm wrong. I believe the actual type of memorial has not been decided, but I believe the plan is for all the municipal units. And hopefully we'll be able to involve the Legacy Society and perhaps work together towards having one memorial. What that would look like, you know, whether it's a large stone monument, whether it's a some, you know, something in a park. That decision hasn't been made yet, but it is my understanding that we're looking at doing one memorial.
Adam, did you want to comment that for Counselor Heav?
Through you, Mr. Chair, that was the the conversation around the table. At this point in time, it is working collaboratively for one larger memorial. What that may look like, scope and scale hasn't been identified. And I think that was to speak to kind of, I can understand council's hesitation for wanting to put a dollar figure forward at this point. But understand the scope and scale hasn't been identified. I guess it was trying to understand to the scale council was possibly envisioning because there there very well could be a larger ask coming back to council and I think just being able to understand where council is from that perspective was really what the part of the recommended motion was for and can absolutely appreciate that council may not want to provide a dollar amount.
Counselor Heav, you still on the floor, sir?
Thank you. Just some comments. I know that it's been said that if one family or two families are against memorial, that maybe it shouldn't happen, but to me, that's disrespectful to the ones that may want it. And I I think we should go with the majority because I know there are people up there that they don't want Nova Scotia to forget this, and they don't want Nova Scotia to 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 think that it is forgotten. So it's a reminder that this stuff can happen every day. So in my opinion, you know, I mean, if the majority of the of the people are in favor, I I would be in support of that. I I know that the previous counselor, Shubanakety, had talked to the people of the McCool Park there. And there was no problem with that there, you know, they they were they were behind that 100%. So I'm assuming that that it would still be there. But if it wants to be in a neutral area, it wouldn't work. But I think that would be a suitable place right there. You know, there were a few people lost their lives there and and I I guess it's all on how the committee perceive what they want to have. And as far as the Warden goes, I'm I'm fully supportive of her if she wants to represent it. And as far as the money dollar goes, I I would have to wait to see what what kind of money we're looking for. So thank you, Deputy.
Thank you, Counselor Heav. Counselor Rhino, you have the floor.
Very similar to Counselor Heav. I do believe that, you know, keeping the Warden in the discussions and is very valuable. But a commitment at this time, I think, is way too early. We don't know a dollar figure. We don't know, you know, whereabouts, you know, site selection would be. There's too many unknowns at this time, but I think it is important to keep the Warden, you know, there or any other representative there to keep East Hanson informed. And so that that that's how I feel at this time because, you know, i- if a neutral site spec, fine, but if not, I think, you know, Wickwire Station is is neutral. But I don't think personally that that for me, that would be the place I would pick. So, thank you.
Warden Ralston?
I I will say the majority of loss of life did occur in Colchester County, so I I don't know, but there may be a location somewhere there somewhere. But, you know, there's been no decision. And when they said neutral place, I believe the meaning was that they didn't want to put the memorial somewhere directly where the loss of life had occurred. With regards, I understand what Counselor Heav is saying, but I'm going to put it out there, folks. This is very difficult for those folks, and there will be memorials of different kinds and different scopes, similar to the one the folks in Shubanakety are doing. And I, my mind won't let me go there as as no one's mind probably will. But I am, you know, I am very much in agreement with the sentiment that was expressed at the meeting that if all families didn't support this, that I'm, you know, I I just don't think that I could. If you had one family or two families who felt that this was not the right way to proceed, then I just would not be comfortable doing it. And this is going to be difficult decision and the families are going to have to be reached out to and, you know, it it's not going to happen overnight. So I I would really appreciate, you know, having a feel as to how council, how our council feels. I know how Cumberland feels. I I don't know how HRM or Colchester feel yet about about things, but I would just like to have a feel for how our council feels. And I just think that if there if there were objections to a large centralized memorial of some kind by any of the families, I think that at that time, if there were objections to to that, that we would still have the option to go and perhaps some park benches in Wickwire Station or some park benches in the memorial in Shuvi. We would have an option to do something on our own on a smaller scale at that time. But personally, I would be very uncomfortable moving forward with a large collaborative memorial against the wishes of any family who lost family members in that tragedy. That's
Okay, so my So I I'll split it into a couple to make it easy if if and you'll let me know, Counselor Heav, if you want to talk. All I'm thinking is that at least ratify that the Warden would be our rep. I'd like to get consensus on that. And then if we can deal with each one, so Counselor Heav, would you like to talk first or?
Yeah, I would just like to say as a municipality, no matter what we do, if the the wish is not to put a memorial up because all families are not in favor of it, if we do something, we're just going against the whole thing, you know, because if they they don't want anything done as a as a group, we do it separately. We're doing just against what they want. So, you know, there's no difference, in my opinion.
Not necessarily, because the families may simply just not want a large memorial and, you know, a large memorial that would draw large crowds of people to it. And I would use, I know it's entirely different, but in the discussion, the Swiss Air Memorial was mentioned. And I think there's concern that some family members, you know, might not want a large memorial that could become some type of tourist attraction. I think that that's part of, you know, part of the concern anyway.
However, though, we're we're at this point, we're trying to figure out what the family's wishes are, and we don't know them at this point, correct?
No, we don't.
Okay, so to to your point, they might be all for it, they might be all against it, and the Counselor Heav's point, they might be against a big one and small ones, or they might just want small ones. So I think if if the way I'm seeing it, the first thing is can we get a ratification that the Warden will be our representative? Well, I guess first, I guess, are we going to continue with this committee? What's council's?
And if we do, it would be my intent to take Adam with me. I don't think they'll not permit me to do that.
Yeah, so is counselors wish that we continue on with this committee? Counselor Musa? All right, then I'm 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 guessing you moved it then? You you're muted, Counselor Musa, so you'd have to unmute yourself.
I said I'm good.
So, all right, so I'm going to say you're moving that we are continuing on with this. Counselor Mitchell, you seconded it? Counselor Knockwood, in regards to the motion?
No, I was just going to second it.
Okay, all right, so so any other questions on that we're moving forward? With with the Warden being our rep? Yes, Counselor Rhino?
So that is the motion. There's nothing else to add to that.
No, I'm I'm keeping it extremely clean because I think I want to make sure. Yeah, so the intent is we're moving forward and the Warden is going to be our rep.
Moving forward, we mean all
They're going to go on to the committee. There'll be reports back to us on anything else that we would have to ratify.
Just so we're clear on what moving forward is is the intent, what the intent is.
Yep, there we're clear on that. Any more discussion on the intent?
Question.
Question's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Contrary? Okay, motion encouraged unanimously. So Warden, you're the rep. We're going to move forward. I'm catching the the vibe around here that we're in regards to money. Nobody wants to talk about it until they know the scope.
If I'm going to be on this committee, I mean, I have to have the ability to answer some questions.
Yeah.
And my ability to answer those will be guided by council's wishes. So I really, going forward, you know, this might end early on depending on the decision. this might end early on, depending on the decision that council makes. I need to know whether or not council is supportive of moving ahead with this, if any families are against it.
Okay, so and that's that's why I wanted to break it, and that's why I wanted to break it into just small chunks at this point. So I'm going to word it that um I'd like a motion. And the person who's moving is gonna have to decide how to word it.
That might I suggest that the motion would be that East Hans participation on this would be contingent on all families uh being supportive.
Well, actually, here's the kicker. You're not in the chair, so you would can actually move that motion, which will make my life easier, because I can't move motions. So you're not in the chair right now. So could you move that motion and then we'll get it seconded possibly and voted on?
Well, I would move that East Hans's, East Hans continued participation is contingent on on support from all of the affected families.
Seconded.
You're seconded by councillor Green. Question on the ca- on the motion?
What's?
Any discussion is what I meant. Question's been called, and I didn't see any hands, so go to vote. If you, I raise your hand. I opposed, nay. Councillor Heb, it passed with councillor Heb voting nay. Um
And finally, um I understand council's reluctance to put a figure in there. But I guess my idea was I'd just like some type of uh idea, if it were possible, about an order of magnitude. Like, if I'm going in there, you know, it's a very different discussion if we're talking about something that I feel might cost us twenty thousand dollars. Uh or if the discussions go and it looks like it might be more like a hundred thousand, I guess I'm just I was just looking for some type of guidance in an order of magnitude of of how much council would be prepared to support. I know that we don't know what it is or what the cost is. But I don't wanna waste anybody's time and uh, you know, develop some wonderful project that is beyond the budgetary capability of this municipality and that I know council would not support. I can make a guesses to that, but I would prefer to, you know, have some idea of council supports in order of magnitude of, you know, ten thousand, twenty thousand uh for our part. If if there's some figure that they, you know, you would feel comfortable enough to support.
Okay, thank you, Warden. Um, so I've got councillor Rhino, councillor Mitchell, councillor Knockwood. Before I let him speak, anybody else wanna get on? Councillor Rhino, you have the floor.
Previous motion that I supported was to remain on the committee to hear what the suggestions and the and the uh and the uh decisions, you know, what they come up with. Not to put a dollar figure on it, not to put a ceiling on what we could give, nothing. That was why I supported it. My is, we should have a report back from our representative saying, okay, this is what we planned, because I don't think that this is gonna happen just like that. And uh I can't support anything to uh putting the ceiling on this and and just open it up, because that's why I didn't, that's why I supported that other motion, because it was just to go forward and let's see where where this is gonna go. That's my feeling.
If I
Thank you, councillor Rhino.
In all fairness, it is going to be difficult for the committee to come up with the scope of a project if the committee members
Raise your hand to speak. Um um councillor Heb, your point of order is?
My point of order is that you had a roll call for people to speak and councillor Ralston was not one of those. The Rhino, councillor Mitchell, and councillor Knockwood. And all of a sudden councillor Ralston is is interrupting, so I think we should go to the procedure that's been in place.
And and Warden Ralston was clarifying why she did it. I was giving her some latitude. Um but in all honesty, you are correct. I mean, um since a sense of question wasn't actually directed back to the warden, um I shouldn't have allowed her to do it, but the warden um i- is uh, you're you're correct. So um I will go now to councillor Mitchell.
Thank you, deputy warden. My question would just be that if council decides to go through with the financial contribution, where would this money come from? Is it a reserve or some other pot, or that's what I'm looking for, where the money would come from?
Okay, so I'm gonna guess, Kim, I'll let you speak to that.
Through your deputy warden, um the council doesn't have a budget for this particular project. You do have contingency reserves that you would tap into to fund something like this. There's no particular budget set aside for it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, councillor Mitchell. Councillor Knockwood.
Well, mine is the best question. When's the next meeting for this committee?
Um, that question would be to you, Warden Ralston. Do we have a scheduled or do we have a court scheduled meeting for that?
No, we don't. We're still waiting for the uh committee members to be appointed to the ad hoc committee. I I believe that they anticipated it would be fairly soon. They wanted to know within a week who was going to be on the committee. So you're understanding, Adam?
That's correct.
Uh it sounds like they're hoping to get this ratified in the next couple of weeks.
Well, I think
Like
I just think just given the names is uh be the first order, I guess, but that just probably take a couple of months at least to um come up uh location and and a figure of uh finance.
Yeah.
Yeah, it ain't gonna happen overnight, you know, it's not gonna happen over a week either, so I think we got a little bit of time, so we can discuss this.
Okay, I think. Okay, and I think Adam wants to comment on that, so go ahead, Adam.
Yeah, I think uh through you, Mr. Chair, from a staff perspective, uh one of our things to bring back to the table alongside the warden will be to put some more parameters in front of this ad hoc committee, whether it's through a terms of reference or so forth, to help guide whatever this process may be. It will be a lengthy process. They did want to have a follow-up meeting relatively in short order. Um I decided I would add in that that comment, because there's there's quite a few questions tonight around uh next steps and so forth, and the committee really needs to kind of put more parameters around that and probably provide that back to their respective councils.
Thank you, Adam. Does that answer your question, councillor Knockwood?
Yeah, thanks.
Um, Warden Ralston, I'll let you comment since I uh had to cut you off.
I I simply wanted to make the comment that I understand council's reluctance to put a price on this. All I was looking for was an idea of, you know, in council's mind, how much they might feel that we would be willing or could afford to contribute towards this. It's going to be very difficult to determine the scope of the project and how much the memorial that we would be looking at how much the cost would be invested in that if no participating partner has any idea how much they have to spend on it. And I just thought it would be helpful to try and guide the discussion if we had some idea uh as to that. Certainly uh happy to abide by council's just decision and if uh you know, if I can't answer that on behalf of East Hans and I can't answer that on behalf of East Hans, um that's just how it will be. Thank you.
Thank you, Warden. Uh councillor Perry, then I have councillor Heb. Um just before you speak, councillor Green, did you wanna get on the list? Okay, just checking. Sorry, go ahead, councillor Perry.
Uh, thank you, Deputy Warden. Um, no, I agree that uh, you know, um we've now moved who our representatives are gonna be when this next meeting's gonna happen. I don't think they're gonna get into scope and size of the project at the next meeting. I think they're gonna have to get into ratification of all the family members having their input first, and I think we have some time for the family members and the committee to have conversations to ensure everybody's on board before going forward with a scope. That would be my thoughts about how uh it could work. I could be wrong, but I would I would expect the committee, once the members are are ratified, they then have to go to the families and have those conversations before going forward uh with a scope. So I believe we do have time, and when the the cost of money comes back, I believe it should go to committee for discussion. Thank you.
Thank councillor Perry. Councillor Heb.
Uh, thank you, War- Deputy Warden. Councillor Perry was asked to, had made the statement that I was gonna make. It has to uh, has to be ratification before we move forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I would say, Warden, that the comment on there is we're just not sure how much we're willing to put to the table until we find out how big the table is.
Fine, I will certainly relay that message.
And considering I think nobody else wanted to talk, I'm gonna turn it back to you. Because there's no other motions that I have to deal with for this, so I will turn the chair over to you, Warden.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, the next item is uh our committee reports, and we will start with Corporate and Residential Services Committee. Uh, deputy warden, back to you.
I guess I shouldn't have muted. The committee held its regular meeting on April twentieth, twenty twenty-one in council chambers. The following motions are coming forward as the result of the meeting. Councillor Cissind- uh council procedural policy annual review and review by council of their council policy per section one point four of the council procedural policy, as well as an opportunity to update housekeeping items identified since the last update. The Corporate Residential Services Committee recommended council, the council approved the council procedure policy as attached to the April twentieth, twenty twenty-one executive committee agenda. As chair of the committee, I so move.
Seconded. Moved by the deputy warden, seconded by councillor Perry. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
Questions been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion is carried.
Terms of reference template. Council directed staff to facilitate a review of the fire advisory committee terms of reference, T O R, and other committee and with public members. Staff had started the process to develop a standard terms of reference template to be bring consistency to the various committee tiers. To commit, the Corporate Residential Services Committee recommend that council direct staff to prepare a standard committee terms of reference template, including, one, setting a limit or cap on consecutive terms held by a public member and find a balance by going to the public term, public every term to ensure openness, accountability, and transparency versus setting higher term limits. Two, setting an attendance requirement and consequences if not upheld. Example, a committee member with out leave of the committee is absent from three consecutive meetings of the committee ceases to be qualified to serve. As chair of the committee, I so move.
Seconded.
Moved by the deputy warden, seconded by councillor Green. Is there any discussion?
Question.
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion has carried.
Uniac Business Park Phase Two Capital Budget Increase. The Uniac Business Park ph- phase two design and road construction project was approved by municipal council as part of the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two capital budget. The approved capital budget of four hundred and seventy-five thousand was based on preliminary information from the lowest bid received for phase one. At the time of the capital budget approval, phase two design was not yet complete. Engineering and technical services have now finalized the phase two design portion of the project. The Corporate Residential Services Committee recommended council to set a capital budget of eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for capital budget number twenty dash zero zero five to be funded from business park lot sales revenues. As chair of the committee, I so move.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, and I'm not sure by who. Um with the second or
Councillor Green is who I heard.
All right, moved, seconded by councillor Green. Is there any further discussion? Councillor Rhino.
Yes, I will support the motion, but he was some reluctance, and I understand that uh, you know, prices are going up, but we just finished capital budget in the, in the, uh uh I just feel that uh some inkling of of or being told that in prices may increase would have been uh relevant at that time. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Question.
Question.
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion has passed unanimously.
Planning, staffing resources. Several functions within the planning and development department are experiencing experiencing large increases in the workloads over historical trends. This is having an impact on service levels. The Corporate Residential Services Committee recommended council, the council approved a hundred and forty thousand dollar budget over two years beginning in twenty twenty-one to address the current anticipated increase in development activity to be funded through savings in vacant positions during twenty twenty, twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one. As chair of the committee, I so move.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded by councillor Mitchell. Uh, is there any discussion? Councillor Perry.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, or thank you, Madam Warden. Um, to go along with this, I think uh as a municipality grows and things build out, we have to be uh in the realization that um we're gonna have to be looking at this in other departments as well in the future, so we should keep that in the back of our minds as we move forward. Thank you.
Any further discussion? And councillor Rhino.
Just to uh, just to be clear, uh these uh positions, term positions that will be evaluated in case this is a uh just a burst in the bubble.
Yes, Madam Chair, or Madam Warden, there.
Good, thank you.
Any further discussion?
Question.
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion has passed unanimously.
As chair of the committee, I move the adoption of this report.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion is carried. Moving on. Next.
Oh, councillor.
Yes, um unfortunately, I gotta leave. I got another Zoom meeting to go to. And I have my apologies and um I'll I'll check it on YouTube here tomorrow. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Knockwood. Next is Parks, Recreation and Culture Committee. Uh, over to you, councillor Rhino.
Committee held its regular meeting on April the tw- uh twentieth, twenty twenty-one in council chambers. The following motions are coming forward as a result of this meeting. Number one, COVID grants. In February, council approved one-time COVID nineteen relief grant for community operated recreational facilities in community halls with uh with three streams. A, basic hall support grant of five hundred dollars simplified application. B, a community halls maximum twenty-five hundred dollar funding. And C, multi-use recreational facilities with a maximum of ten thousand dollar funding. Twelve applications for stream A, basic hall support were received, processed by staff as per council motion, C twenty-one sixty-one for a total of six thousand dollars. So from that, the Parks and Recreation and Culture Committee recommended council, the council approved community recreation facility COVID nineteen relief grant funding streams B and C totaling thirty-seven thousand dollars as follows. Enfield, Elmsdale Lines Club, twenty-five hundred dollars. East Gore Community Hall, twenty-five hundred dollars. Gore Fire Department, twenty-five hundred dollars. Hardwood Land's Community Hall, twenty-five hundred dollars. Maitland Maitland Fire uh Department, twenty-five hundred. Noel Road Community Club, two thousand dollars. Tannockay Community Hall, twenty-five hundred. Opera Nine Mile River Community Hall, twenty-five hundred. Walton Fire Department, twenty-five hundred. Handstones Recreation Association, five thousand, and Milford Recreation Association, ten thousand. As chair of the committee, I do so move.
Seconded.
Moved by councillor Rhino, seconded by the deputy warden. Is there any discussion?
Last question.
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion has passed unanimously.
Number two, tourism grants, twenty twenty twenty-one. Uh, this report brings forward tourism grants programs, funding recommendations for executive committee co- co- consideration and recommendation to council for approval. For two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two, fiscal year council approved fiscal year council approved a total budget of thirty thousand dollars for tourism grants. For so from this, the Parks and Recreation and Culture Committee recommends to council that tourism grants totaling thirty-nine thousand five hundred dollars be awarded to the following groups. And that the funds in excess of the thirty thousand dollar budget be funded from tourism grant reserve. Chart Society, four thousand dollars. East Dance Historical Society, twelve thousand dollars. East Noel Heritage Schoolhouse Society, four thousand dollars. Maitland District Development Maitland District Development Association, thirteen thousand dollars. And Walton Area Development Association, six thousand five hundred dollars. And that staff release funds, approve, release approved funds is confirmation of external funding proposed project is received from each group. And that the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three draft budget include a forty thousand dollar grant instead of a thirty thousand for tourism. As chair of the committee, I do so move.
Moved by councillor Rhino, seconded by councillor Green. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Question.
Question's been called. All those in favor? Contrary minded, motion has passed unanimously.
As chair of the committee, I move the adoption of this report.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor? Contrary, motion is carried. Next, we have Planning Advisory Committee, councillor Green.
Thank you, Warden. The committee held its regular meeting on April twentieth twenty twenty one in council chambers. The following motions are coming forward as a result of this meeting. Item one, F H Development, W C D D Application Initial Report. F H Development Group has submitted an application for a walkable comprehensive development district. Which is being considered through a development agreement application. The Planning Advisory Committee recommends that council give initial consideration to enter into a development agreement for a W C D D development on properties identified as P I D number four five two four four two two five. P I D number four five zero eight four three nine nine and P I D number four five zero eight three five eight one Elmsdale. And authorize staff to schedule a public information meeting. As chair of the committee, I so move.
Moved by councillor Green, seconded by councillor Mitchell. Discussion, deputy warden.
Um, I just through you, Warden, I would expect that the pin would be happening in June due to the close thing of May. Just, am I correct?
Sorry, regarding the online meeting?
Yes, would that be scheduled for June?
Uh, probably. It hasn't been set yet, but that's the expectation.
Yeah, I just, uh, the only reason I was asking, sorry, through you, Warden. The only reason I was asking was just making sure we weren't gonna do it in May because that really isn't giving many people um, that. So, thank you, Miss Meta Warden.
Any further questions or discussion on the motion? Question's been called. All those in favor? Contrary, motion has passed unanimously.
Item number two, Dr. David Sheehy, M P S and L U B amendments, the initial report. Municipality has received an application from Dr. David Sheehy to enable the Schubin Academy Health Center to be changed to residential. The property is located in the high-risk floodplain zone and residential use is not permitted in the floodplain zone. The Planning Advisory Committee recommend that council authorize staff to schedule a public information meeting to consider the proposal from Dr. David Sheehy to amend the M P S and L U B to enable an existing building to be used as an alternative use. As chair of the committee, I so move.
Moved by councillor Green, seconded by councillor Musa. Is there any discussion? Ready for the question?
Question.
Been called. All those in favor? Contrary, motion has passed unanimously.
Item number three, Portree J A C C M P S and L U B amendments, first reading. The municipality has received an application from Donald Martin of Portree J A C C Enterprise Incorporated to redesignate and rezone property in South Uniak from rural use R U to two dwelling unit residential R two zone. A public information meeting has been held and staff are now recommending first reading. The Planning Advisory Committee recommends to council to give first reading to amendments to the M P S and L U B that would change a portion of P I D number four five one four one four nine six from rural use R U to establish residential neighborhood E R designation. And from rural use R U to two dwelling unit residential R two zone for the purpose of authorizing a public hearing and to authorize staff to schedule a public hearing. And that notice be given to residents within five hundred meters. As chair of the committee, I so move.
Moved by councillor Green, seconded by councillor Mitchell. Is there any discussion? Question's been called. All those in favor? Contrary, motion has passed unanimously.
Item number four, W M Fairs Architects on behalf of Monk Mobile. First reading of amendments and initial consideration of development agreement. The municipality received an application from W M Fairs Architects on behalf of Monk Mobile Corporation Limited and Allison Land Surveys Limited to change the land use designation and zone of P I D number four five three two nine nine zero one. P I D number four five three seven nine eight six four. And P I D number four five four one zero five oh three Enfield to walkable comprehensive development district, W C D D. And to enter into a development agreement with the municipality of East Hands. The Planning Advisory Committee recommend that council give first reading to an application from W M Fairs Architects to amend the M P S and L U B by changing the land use designation and zone to walkable comprehensive development district. Give initial consideration to entering into a development agreement with the applicant to permit a mixed-use development, including townhouses and mixed-use capable buildings on lands identified as P I D numbers four five three two nine nine zero one. P I D number four five three seven nine eight six four. And P I D number four five four one zero five oh three Enfield. Enable a public hearing and authorize staff to schedule a public hearing and discharge the two thousand and nine development agreement regarding the neighboring childcare facility. As chair of the committee, I so move.
They moved by councillor Green, seconded by councillor Musa. Is there any discussion on the motion? Councillor Mitchell.
Yes, good. Just thank you, Warden, your question through to staff. What's the difference between this and the original application?
Through you, Madam Warden, the first application was just looking, I think, at a rezoning, uh, to rezone more of the property to mixed-use center. Uh, as opposed to switching it to comprehensive development district and including a development agreement. So a development agreement wasn't part of the first application, it's just a rezoning. And re-designation and rezoning.
Through you, Warden, does this give him more options?
Uh, yes, it does. Uh, through you, Madam Warden. It, it actually opens up negotiation, whereas before there's no negotiation, you are either zoned or you don't. And then if the owner is able to comply with the zone regulations, they can, you know, get a building permit right away sort of thing, whereas with the development agreement, we're into a negotiation, um, over parking and landscaping and setbacks, all those things.
But through you, Warren, you, but you still have control of the development though.
Well, yes, actually, well, you, you actually have more control through a development agreement because your everything is laid out in that D A as opposed to just some general rules in the land use bylaw that somebody would have to follow. So council will know exactly what's gonna go on that property, um, if they approve a development agreement.
Thank you, Madam Warden. That's all.
Councillor Garden Cole. Councillor Garden Cole.
There we go. Can, thank you, Madam Warden. Um, through you. When you refer to this, I'm just wondering when you talk about that you have more control. Can you just repeat that again? I just want to be clear on what you just said.
If, if you're just re-designating and rezoning a property, um, there are some regulations in the land use bylaw about the height of buildings, the setbacks. But that don't tell exactly how you need to lay out that property or exact number of units that you're gonna put on it. There's just kind of maximums for things. When you get into a development agreement, you actually set aside the land use bylaw and you negotiate all those things, the height of buildings, the number of units, landscaping, parking provisions, everything is then put into a development agreement, either the text of the D A or, um, on the site plan that's attached to the D A. And the building elevations that are attached to the, the D A so that a council knows exactly what to expect on that site.
Well, when you say council knows what to expect, or, uh, as you said, council negotiates with what they, they can expect is going to be approved?
Through you, Madam Warren, I mean, staff do the back and forth, but yes, at the end of the day, it's council's approval of what's in that development agreement. And I mean, in the past, when we brought draft development agreements, if council didn't like some of the clauses, they got changed. Uh, council has that ability.
Okay, and those, um, those changes or those rules that council may make would uh, possibly, um, be affected by what the residents around that area, how they may feel about it?
Well, I mean, council's gonna take that input, staff's input, the applicant and, and come to a decision, but that would be part of your decision-making, um, analysis, I guess.
What is the next, um, step? Should this be approved? What is the next step after this?
The, the next step would be, um, staff finish hour evaluation and uh, draft a final report with a recommendation and bring that back to Planning Advisory Committee. And from there, it would go on the path it's on now, it would go straight to a public hearing from that Planning Advisory Committee meeting.
Okay, thank you.
If I, if I could, John, just interject, but the part of this which requires, uh, the zoning change and the change to the M P S and the L U B. Should at any stage of this council decide not to do that, then the process stops, correct?
Yes, it does.
And that is not appealable, correct?
No, because there is an M P S amendment component to it, so there would be no appeal to that.
However, if council approves the amendments to the M P S and L U B and denies the development agreement, that would be appealable.
Correct.
Just wanted to make sure, cause sometimes I know it's confusing for, for folks, so. Councillor Garden Cole.
Sorry, but thank you. Thank you, Madam Chairman. Um, so I just want to be really clear on this. And you just said something there that, um, once again, I'm going to ask, um, that to be repeated. The terms, what, what, uh, what, um, the warden just said there. Um, maybe Mr. Woodford, can you clarify that for me again?
So in terms of the whenever you're amending your municipal planning strategy, um, and if there are other things attached to that, like a rezoning. Um, that decision of council is not appealable because the, the theory is that you can only appeal council's decision by suggesting that it's not consistent with their own policy, but by amending your M P S, you're making new policy, so that's why it's not appealable. If, uh, however, the M P S and was amended and the zone was put in place. Um, and then you denied a development agreement, once that's in place, that would be appealable, just like if you had re-designated something but not rezoned it, um, you know, denied a rezoning application, that would be appealable. I don't know if that helps, but i- it's just the fine line. Whenever you have an M P S amendment involved, it's not appealable because that is council making new policy.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Have councillor Rhino and then councillor Mitchell.
Right now, if nothing can be appealable right now, but if we soon, as soon as we change that the municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw and change it to allow it, then it becomes appealable, correct?
That's correct, uh, Madam Warden. And I mean, this is one application, so you know, presumably you're going to, uh, make a decision on the M P S at the same time you do with a development agreement, so you, you know, your decision on the D A wouldn't be appealable because it's, you know, you're the way we craft the motions, it's really, it depends on council first, uh, amending the M P S.
Yeah, but what, what effect will amending this M P S and L U B have on further develop developers down the road? Because it sounds to me like if we change that, then, then that opens a door for, uh, more changes down the road.
Um, through you, Madam Warren, o- only on this site, I mean, you're, you're, yes. Yeah, you're, you're changing, the proposal is to change the designation to W C D D, which will then allows us, that's a zone that doesn't allow anything. It all, only allows you to negotiate a development agreement. So, and it's site-specific for this particular development.
So if we change this M P S and L U B and then we don't like something down the road, too bad, it's appealable then, we're pretty well locking ourselves in, correct?
Well, through you, Madam, uh, Warren, yeah, but, um, you're looking at the, you're not just doing it in, in theory, you're not just changing the M P S and L U B without knowing what somebody's gonna come forward with later. You know, you have an, you have an application for a development agreement as well in front of you, so you're considering the policy change, at the same time, you're considering what somebody's gonna do with that policy change.
So if you don't like, really, so if you don't like it right now as it is, you should not support this.
Now's the time, yes.
Now's the time, yeah, correct. Thank you.
Councillor Mitchell.
Yes, through you, uh, Madam Warden, uh, to staff, what can be built right now as of right on that property?
So, th- through you, Madam Warren, on the front of the property, it's on what's called mixed-use center, that would allow multi-unit buildings similar to what's being proposed. Um, they just won't get the density because it doesn't go as far back on the property. And they can't negotiate a, like, the higher, uh, number of stories and so on. They're, they're limited to four stories. But it does allow mixed-use development, multi-unit and commercial on the ground floor.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Councillor Garden Cole.
Thank you, Madam Warden. So, um, I'm just going to say that I won't be supporting this motion. I have, uh, on behalf of the residents, I have received nothing but concern and fear and I guess the list goes on and on about what this resident, what this development could end up being at the bottom of this residential area. And I, in, in good conscience as representative, I, I cannot support this development. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Councillor Musa.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Uh, John, as if we vote for the application now, we still have to, to go to the public hearing to, to make the final vote, right?
Through you, Madam, uh, Warren, yeah, this is just, this is a step that then allows us to finish our analysis and bring it to a public hearing for consideration.
Yeah, but we cannot vote for the M P S and L U B before we hear from the public, right?
That, that's right. It, it would all happen at a, at a public hearing, um, when, you know, you would hear from the public and then vote on it after that.
Yeah, because the way, the way you said now is, is now or not, or never, so.
Well, through you, Madam, let me clarify that. If you have concerns about the, I guess, the general idea of what's being proposed here, then yes, you should, um, I guess weigh in now. If, you know, you're not comfortable sending it, what we have now off to a public hearing, then now is the time, but I, I agree. I think it's always better to go to the public hearing, hear from the public, allow staff to complete their analysis and then make a decision.
Yeah, because when you said it, it sounded like if we approve it now, we, we just change the M P S. So I had to, so, thank you.
Councillor Garden Cole.
Thank you, Madam Warden, through you. And, and yes, that, that, um, that terminology that you used did, did strike me as well. But I believe that in two thousand and nineteen, the proposal of this did go to a, to a public hearing. And, and there were a lot of people there and they were very concerned about it then. And I think that the, the writing is on the wall with the residents in this area. They didn't want anything to do with it then, and they still don't. It's not like this hasn't been thrown out there before. Um, people who bought, you know, what, what in this area is considered high-end homes in white estates and that area. And never dreaming that this was the proposal of, you know, six-story apartment buildings was going to, um, be at the lower half of, um, of Lacy Anne. And, and so I, I feel, I, I, they haven't changed in how they, they felt about it from two thousand and nineteen. I know that, and, and that's why I, I won't be supporting it now. Thank you.
Madam Warren, just to be clear, what was held previously was a public information meeting. We haven't held a public hearing on this application yet.
I stand corrected. Thank you.
Any further discussion? The question has been called, and just to be clear, the question, the motion is to go forward to the next step, to a public hearing. Or to allow staff to schedule a. Or to allow staff to schedule a public hearing, so. All those in favor?
Alright.
Contrary. Nay. So the motion has passed, myself, Counselor Rhino, and Counselor Garden Cole voting nay.
As Chair of the Committee, I move the adoption of this report.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Alright.
Contrary motion is carried. Next is Infrastructure and Operations Committee Report, Counselor Musa.
Uh, thank you, Madam Warden. The committee held its regular meet monthly meeting on April twenty of twenty twenty-one in council chambers. The following motion is coming forward as a result of that meeting, in camera legal issue. As part of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one capital budget, staff prepared a request uh for proposals for engineering companies to review the superstructure, top decking and substructure peers of the South Maitland viewing platform. And submit their report detailing what may be required for short-term and long-term oper- operations, excuse me. The Infrastructure and Operation Committee recommend to council, that municipality proceed with the installation of monitoring monitoring infrastructure to monitor the structural integrity of the South Maitland viewing platform substructure. Which includes adding ten thousand dollars to capital project twenty dash zero zero nine to be funded by six thousand from special reserves, T E D fund, and four thousand from the tourism operation and capital reserve. As Chair of the Committee, I so move.
Second.
Moved seconded by Counselor Rhino. Is there any discussion on the motion? Counselor Rhino.
Yes, uh, supported. Uh, so it is our intent that we install these monitoring uh devices on on the uh in but there. And uh, is it our, is it also our intent to open that platform? And if we are opening that platform floor, is there a loading requirement for that platform?
Who's taking this, Adam, or?
Uh, through, I'll start, Madam Warden, and uh if Jesse pops on, he can provide additional input on the uh technical loading uh question. Um, from the operational side, um, we plan to open it um for the season, uh which is beginning um May twentieth uh to the public. And we'll be doing daily visual checks on it throughout the seizing season until late fall. And then we will close it off, uh and not um have access to the public over the winter months, as we won't be inspecting it daily. Uh, we'll be having a chain or a bargo across uh with some signage that it's closed for the season, much like we do with some of our other parks.
So see, can you speak to the loading question?
I can, uh, uh. Alright, uh, through you, Mr. Chair, the 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 question on loading that loading was not a consideration of the study that was undertaken. Uh, the study solely focused on the condition of of the assets, not a a calculation on loading. So there isn't a a capacity um number that was worked on or or looked at, it was solely a review of the condition of the asset itself for structural integrity.
I guess, as much as I'd like to see it open, I just want to make sure that that we're not setting ourselves up for uh or uh anything in the future whereby, you know, we should have had a loading loading uh requirement or anything like that. How do you feel? What your thought on that? Uh, Jesse?
Through you, Mr. Chair, the this this gets into the choices uh of the municipality um on comfort level, the on risks of 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 the structure. It's not something we've looked at, so there's no information either way on it. What the pins will achieve for us is an ability to monitor. Um, it was not, uh, there was no definitive information that said anything would uh negatively would happen with the structure im- imminently this this fiscal, it was just indeterminate. So what we need to to do or are suggesting for due diligence is to continue to monitor, not change anything that we hadn't done the previous year other than monitor and do checks at at uh at the start of the day by by staff to validate everything. Look, the similar, nothing has changed, so um that that that's really, it really gets into a values choice versus a technical choice on 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 what's changed, the the risk has not changed from from previous years re- realistically, because we didn't have that information before.
So there was no immediate loading concerns when when it was looked at the first time? I I guess that's what I'm trying to get at. There was no immediate loading concerns when it when it was reviewed.
If I could interject, I'm just, because I'm getting a little confused, I don't know about others. I thought the most imminent danger here was that the other pier that's not included in the structure should it collapse and fall a certain way, could damage one of the peers that was holding the structure? Is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Chair, uh, to respond to that question from uh from the Warden, yes, that that is the 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 most decadent and identified structurally concerning structure, isn't the structure of the observation deck, it's actually an adjacent structure. Um, that is um several scenarios, if if it were to collapse, if the the swing pier is what it was called in a report, if if it were to collapse and rolled through the mud and came into contact, what would happen? And and what would happen is indefinitive. Um, there is no guarantee depending on what would happen. If it would fall towards it or away, um, and there was an adjacent um structure, there was another swing pier to the south of the observation deck that did collapse two years ago. So there was a previous risk stretch structure that that fell when no one was around and it was not eventful, so it it's it's hard to say what the ultimate risk is.
Anything further, Counselor Rhino?
Not a distant.
Any other counselor have any questions? Are you ready for the question?
Question.
Question has been called. All those in favor?
Alright.
Alright.
Contrary. Decision has passed unanimously.
As Chair of the Committee, I move the adoption of this report.
Second.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
I.
Contrary motion has passed. Next, we'll have the report from the East Hand Source Water Protection Committee Deputy Warden McDonald.
Thank you, Warden. The committee held its regular meeting on April twenty-first, twenty twenty-one electronically via Zoom. The following motions are coming forward as a result of the meeting. Grand Lake watershed aluminum levels, with the high aluminum levels seen at all sample sites in October twenty twenty. The committee discussed having staff review aluminum levels from other sampling programs and compile the results for the committee. The Source Water Protection Advisor Committee recommended council, the council direct staff to review information from other local source water monitor programs. Summarize and validate if high aluminum levels were experienced across the province, and if aluminum levels in the Grand Lake watershed require further investigation. As Chair of the Committee, I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Counselor Musa. Is there any discussion? Counselor Mitchell.
Yes, thank you, Warden, through you to staff. Is there any health risks at the present time?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, the um, the aluminum levels were were discussed at the time, and it's in the source water, not the treated water, so it's not, it wasn't felt that it was a risk to the water utility itself, and dialogue did happen um at the time of those results with Halifax Water, who also draws from the Grand Lake uh watershed from their Collins Park um water facility. Um, it was aligned, we aligned with them that there wasn't a a concern from a treating treatment stance and getting to the to the public. Um, what this motion and recommended motion is, is about doing a deeper dive to see if there's any long-term potential recurrence of of high aluminum and and started started discussion of what that may mean long-term of just source water protection tactics um or other anomalies that may be happening in the natural environment. So so to answer your question, that was the long answer, the uh not, nothing imminent concerning uh public health.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Question.
Question's been called. All those in favor?
I.
My contrary. Motion has passed unanimously.
Wetland compensation matter. It was noted that as a result of highway development, there is a wetland composite compensation project for which various locations have been proposed, including Windsor and Stewa. It is important that this project take place in the Grand Lake watershed and benefit the drinking water utilities located within the watershed, Collins Park and Beaumont, operated by Halifax Water and the East Hand Regional Water Utility. The Source Water Protection Advisor Committee recommended council, the council direct staff to send a letter to the Deputy Minister, Project Lead TAP and N S C. Indicating the support and desire to have compensation spent in this watershed and benefit the three drinking water utilities include a map highlighting East Hand's water shed, I'm assuming was messed up, messed up that. As Chair of the Committee, I so move.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded by Counselor Green. Any discussion on the motion?
Question.
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Alright. Alright.
Contrary motion has passed unanimously.
As Chair of the Committee, I move the adoption of this report.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Counselor Mitchell. All those in favor?
I.
My contrary motion is carried. Next, we have second reading of bylaw F dash one hundred dash seven, an amendment to bylaw F dash one hundred local improvement charges by law.
Okay, second, I move that council gives second reading to bylaw F's one hundred dash seven, an amendment to bylaw F one hundred local improvement, changes by law to add prior local improvements for Highway two fourteen and Cali Lane, not previously included, and the extension of sidewalks from the Elmself Superstore property to the subject property at Pid four five zero eight five two four eight. As Chair of the Committee, I so move.
Seconded.
Seconded by Counselor Greens. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Question.
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Alright. Alright.
Contrary. Motion has passed unanimously. Thank you, Deputy Ward. So that takes us to the Warden's report, so I would turn the chair over to you, Deputy Warden.
Thank you, go ahead, Warden.
Uh, a few items, I did um have a Zoom meeting, as we discussed early, with the memorial committee or initial committee to discuss the possible memorial for the uh for the victims of uh last year's tragedy. I also, just prior to this meeting, was on the uh monthly call for the N S F M for Wartons and Mayors, uh, which was quite interesting. Um, I did have opportunity to deliver in my community uh two volunteer recognition awards to Glenda Kent and to Ari Ooster, and both were very well appreciated, and we certainly appreciate their service to the community. And finally, I have an item, and uh please bear with me if I have raised this with you before, but it came up in my reminder notes to do it at this meeting. And I believe I may have had discussion, and it might have just been at the director's meeting, I'm not sure. But it came to my attention that when we all uh pay our taxes, or if any of us pay our taxes online, we don't have a receipt generated for those, and in some cases, you know, for whatever reason, residents require receipts showing their taxes are paid. That's my understanding that our current policy doesn't allow for this, and that in order to for staff to I guess it's allowed, but the resident has to pay a fee to get a receipt for paying his taxes. And so I would just uh ask staff, what do we have to do to allow, you know, a phone call or an email to staff asking for a receipt that taxes are paid and not have to charge residents for that, because particularly now in the midst of COVID, we want as many people as possible to pay their taxes from home and not come into the office. It's closed at present, but uh so I just would uh ask either Sue or Kim, you know, what do we have to do that would enable staff to issue a receipt without charging a resident, and you know, perhaps one receipt a year or something, but or per, you know, tax billing. Thank you.
So.
I'll let Kim or I'll let Sue talk about it.
Sure, thank you, um, through the chair. So um, we do have a bylaw F two hundred that outlines um councils' charges that uh we are um obligated to charge um when someone asks for either an account statement or receipt or any um additional um information on their account, including um the taxpayer themselves or a law firm. And there is a ten-dollar fee, so uh I I would recommend that um an an amendment be made to the bylaw to uh just add one section that allows for um staff to exempt that, and I can put whatever, I can bring forward the bylaw with whatever council wishes to, um, if you want to have one, one um exemption per year, or whatever it is that you choose.
In order, I see uh other folks with their hands up, but I'm gonna put a motion on the floor to enable the discussion. I would move that staff uh bring forward a report uh outlining how we could enable taxpayers to receive a receipt for paying, when they've paid their taxes online at no additional cost to the taxpayer.
Moved by the Warden, and do I have a second here? Second, but Counselor Mitchell, and just a, I had Counselor Perry, I Counselor Rhino, was there anybody else? Okay, you guys were before the motion, so I'll give you a lot of legal way, uh, Counselor Perry.
Uh, thank you, Deputy Warden. So if I'm understand this correctly, we don't give receipts to people when they pay their bills?
If they pay them online. If you at the office, you get a receipt. If you pay them online, you don't.
Okay, no, that that was news to me, because normally you pay anywhere, anything else online, they send a receipt to the email that's attached to the account where you.
So, Sue, do you want to comment on that?
So normally, when someone pays online, it just goes through the bank and and it's um and upload into our system and automatically puts the payment onto the tax account. And then it's just reflected on the account. Um, and then if there's any um additional outstanding balance, then a reminder notices goes out, or uh it gets picked up on the next tax bill, it'll show in arrears, or it'll show the balance uh is paid. So um, what's happened is as as COVID impacted, you know, being able to pay in person, more people are paying online, but some taxpayers do need to show that they've paid um their taxes for various reasons. Um, perhaps their mortgage, or um if they're applying for a grant or so on. So um, we do this now for senior tax rebate programs, and and that's just we we provide tax information, and that's a a separate item, but if someone individually just asks for um the balance on their account, we can give that verbally without a charge, but we're obligated by the bylaw to charge ten dollars if they want it in writing.
Okay, because I I understand if somebody is requesting a balance update or requesting any additional information that, yeah, there should be a charge for that. You're asking for something beyond the normal. But I just uh would have thought it would have been normal that when you pay money, you get a receipt for what you deposited. Okay, thank you.
Okay, um I'm going to allow the C E O to comment first and then Counselor Rana, because I think she's going to add some information to this. Go ahead.
Um just just to comment on the, you get a receipt when you pay online. The difference is is that we're not actually taking people's money online. They're paying through their bank or their financial institution. So we're not engaging with that person to get their payment. We're engaging with their financial institution to get the payment. And we would get hundreds of these a day. Um so we wouldn't then turn around and print a receipt and mail it out to each person for their payment. They have their bank transaction that would show that they made that payment. If they need a specific receipt from us, then uh we would do those as one offs, just for clarification.
Thank you. Thank you. Um Counselor Rhino, and again, you were before the motion, so I'll give you latitude on this, sir.
Just to be very, very clear, I'll never, ever, ever have that problem because I'll never pay my taxes online. It will be, I'm old and I'm going to pay it at a bank. So there you go. But it just floors me that, you know, we're paying our taxes and to get a receipt, we got to pay that much more. Like that that that's just beyond me. And if a person owned their home outright and wasn't going through a mortgage or or anything like that, and they paid you online, they still wouldn't get a receipt. I I mean, I I can understand making extra work for duplicating things that people ask for for one thing or another. But for paying your taxes, I would think that would be a given whether you paid them online or whether you paid them at a bank or an institution or at the municipal hall. Thank you.
Counselor Musa, um did you want to speak to the motion?
Yeah, thank you. Uh I think when you pay online, you get confirmation number, which say what you're paying for. I always take a picture of it. And what's your last bill on your uh on your tax bill is what you owe. So I think should be all clear there. Thank you.
Thank you. Um Counselor Warden or Counselor Warden. Warden Ralston.
Well, it's not the problem. The residents know they've paid their taxes. They have their confirmation number and they've paid them online. But there are times when they have to provide proof that the tax bill has been paid by way of a receipt and showing someone a confirmation number on your personal banking doesn't provide that to, you know, that. And this is not something that I I don't think we're going to have thousands of requests. It's just that it just, you know, it just seems to me that we should be able to generate a receipt to a taxpayer if they ask for a receipt showing their taxes are paid, uh whether they paid them at the bank or online or or at the desk. That's just my thought on the matter. It just seems fair to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Ready for the question?
Question.
Question's been called. All in favor, say aye. Raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Motion's unanimous. I'm not even going to ask for the names. Anything else, Warden?
No, that uh that uh concludes my report for this evening, unless I forgot something. And uh my internet is getting laggy, so uh I'll do my best to hang on a little longer.
It might not be yours. Mine came up and said it was unstable for a bit. So um any questions for the warden? I'll turn it back to you, Warden.
Thank you. So business from counselors. So let's see, let's start with, you keep changing places on the screen. So we'll start with the Deputy Warden.
Thank you, uh Warden. Um just one item I did on behalf of the warden. I did attend the uh memorial service and laid flowers for the municipality um at the at the Truro Church first on the eighteenth of April. It was interesting because there was only a handful of us there, which was good. Other than that, it's been quiet, except of course, it's grading day where, and I mean that by counselor. People just wonder when the roads are getting graded. Uh the only other thing I just wanted to put out there is I'm getting asked by residents and I'm just gonna throw it out there for other counselors is they're complaining about they're getting the flyers here and they're asking whether we are going to do a bylaw to deal with flyers like in H R M. And I said, I'm gonna, I'll bring it up. So counselors, I don't know, maybe it's just my answer here and about it, but I'm just going to put it out there for other counselors to think about it. And if we're looking at doing it, we can deal with it in the future. I'm not going to put a motion on the table. And I'll just be some happy when we can meet in person and not Zoom. And that's it for me, Ward. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh Counselor Green, oh Counselor Rhino, you have a question?
Yeah, Counselor McDonald or Deputy Warden McDonald was breaking up quite, what did he say about H R? What was he asking for?
Just for us, I think if I caught it all, that H R M has created a bylaw around the delivery of flyers.
Okay.
And uh he wasn't bringing something. He just wanted us to consider, you know, think about it. And perhaps we might have discussion at some future time as to our interest in my.
Very good. No, he was just breaking up and I didn't get it at all.
Okay. Did I get it all, Deputy Warden?
Yes, I I plugged my laptop in Counselor Rhino, which might help with that story. That's basically what it is. People ask. Give me one sec. I'm going to go off this thing. How's that? Okay, it's it's the bylaw that they did in H R M. There's some residents asking if we should do the same thing for flyers, Counselor Rhino. And I would just wanted all the counselors to be aware of the request in case others are getting it. And thanks for letting me know it broke up. It's probably my ears. So thank you.
You're still breaking up and freezing, so you're aware. Uh Counselor Green. Oh, sorry, Counselor. Have you had a question on the same item?
I I just had a comment, uh Madam Warden. Um two years ago, I went through this night. I I called all the flyer delivery people and they have a policy in place that if anybody doesn't want a flyer, they should just put a note up at the end saying no flyers. And their delivery people are supposed to honor that. And also if uh if they saw a flyer in your driveway and they come back the next week, they're supposed to pick that up, which they never do. And if it's never picked up, they're not supposed to deliver anymore there too, just just for information purposes. Thank you.
Counselor Green.
Nothing at this time, Madam Warden. Only everybody stay safe and hopefully in two weeks we'll be back to somewhat what it was before.
Certainly hope so. Thank you. Counselor Rhino.
I'd just like to say that in my district, there's been several uh community members that are going out and uh cleaning the ditches and then they're finding an exorbitant amount of garbage and different uh and different types of garbage and some very heavy stuff. And I would suspect that that, you know, not all of it, but a lot of that was attributed to being shut down last year and the Waste Management Center not being open. And I know we're in difficult times. And uh I understand that and I saw the uh email that came out today uh about keeping the Waste Management Center open. And I hope uh upon hope that uh we, that is viewed as a essential service because uh some of the stuff that these people are are getting uh uh out of the back roads and the ditches is just astronomical. So I just wanted to throw that out there and kudos to those people who are doing that. Uh they take their community very seriously and uh they're just uh trying to do what's best for 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 everyone. So I just wanted to pass that on. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Eisner.
Oh, thank you. Um just a few comments. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, I just got to see you for the last half hour. I couldn't see anybody. Solid waste. Uh just talked to on a person on the road. They just want to know why they had to uh take it to the end of the road and they should make for paying like six thousand in their taxes. So I never really couldn't answer her on that one. And a dirt road's not being plowed, so I didn't, couldn't answer on that one on Thomas Street. Um there was one request from Enfield and Bloom. They're they're going to be putting up their baskets of flowers and they want to know if they could pick up garbage at the same time. Hmm. There again, I don't know if there's any legality thing about that. Um they didn't know if they, if they could get safety vests or if they could put a sign at the start of the highway. So not sure how to, who to call about that. But that's about it. Nothing else.
Yeah. Okay, Kim, do you have a suggestion as to who Counselor Eisner could contact to answer these questions?
Um, Madam Warden, I believe most of those questions could be answered by the infrastructure operations folks. Andrea could certainly point you in the right direction as to how to um start a community cleanup if they wanted to do that at the same time. And your question around the waste being taken to the end of the road sounds to me like a private road question. Um so she could answer that as well. So if you wanted to contact Jesse, um just with some, and I forget the other question. Snow plowing would be Jesse. So maybe start with Jesse uh with a phone call tomorrow morning, uh sometime tomorrow, and then he can point you in the right direction.
I, they must have been busy or something, so I just, but uh I'll try again. How's that?
We'll reach out to you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Rhino, you had a question?
No, just there's an adopt a highway program that is put on and uh if it's a provincial highway and then you can adopt a portion of that, if you go through the right proper channels, you know, you can receive vests, garbage bags and and pickup. So just wanted to throw that out in case of it may be a provincial route.
Okay. Anything else, Counselor Eisner?
No, no, that's good. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Musa.
Uh thank you, Madam Warden. Just trying to survive this COVID thing and a lot of bad news coming from back home, like a town of four thousand people, we lost over forty people so far. About the four thousands, that's big. So I'm terrified out of it anyway. And uh uh I have question to Jesse. I I heard from a resident about a tender for the paving of South Uniac. Maybe we did some good letter for them or did you hear anything about it?
For South Uniac Road, um I haven't, we haven't received an official um correspondence back from our inquiries on South Uniac Road. Um but you've piqued my interest, so I'm going to go look into that tomorrow. Cause so I haven't heard anything official. So if there's, if there's a tender on 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 the books, that's great.
Yeah, when one resident was telling me like they they put this for a tender, so I'm surprised. I said I have to ask Jesse this question.
Yeah.
Thank you. That's it for for today. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh Counselor Hab.
Uh thank you, Warden. Not much going on, just that uh you've had a couple of large thefts of lumber in the community in the last couple of weeks and uh it's been quite the talk. Uh one person building the house, I lost two lifts of plywood and a lift of two by four in the middle of the day. And and the other one, they're not sure what they, when they lost the other one. But uh it's certainly a major concern, especially the price of lumber today, people trying to build houses, why it's uh but it's not something new. The R C M P has said this is uh it's pretty well gone province wide. So other than that, that's been pretty quiet. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Mitchell.
Uh thank you, Warden. Uh just a question, a comment on the flyers that uh Counselor McDonald was talking about. Had a walk today and I went by one driveway on the number two heading towards a square. And there were six bundles of fires that were laying in the driveway that hadn't been picked up. And there's all kinds of flyers that aren't picked up along my street in Elmwood. They're either in the ditch or in the driveway and they've been driven over. Now they're flat. Uh the second item was that I was fortunate enough to have the Model Volunteer of the Year in my district, Norma McIntyre. I presented her with her uh award and her treats. And she was very emotional about it and very appreciative of it. And that's all I had. Everybody be safe and uh enjoy being home.
Thank you. Counselor Perry.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Just a few things. Uh some of my things are already brought up. Um uh there was a, I'll I'll send Andrea a message as well, Kim. Uh there was an issue uh with uh garbage pickup on one of the private roads in Mount Uniac. Um they're always told that garbage pickup will resume when spring weight restrictions are lifted. And they've been lifted for over three weeks now. And then there's now they're saying May first is when it will resume. So they're wondering why there was a discrepancy between they're being told spring weight restrictions and then the date of May of May first. If it's just going to be May first, probably just for clarity, it'd be easier to say May, May first every year, just so 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 they know. Again, there was a, we have the adopt a uh uh an overpass that we're funding for the municipality. However, a few residents have already taken out and started to clean up the one at exit three. Um they didn't get it all because as was said by Counselor Rhino, there was a bunch of items that were just too heavy for for them to lift. But uh there was a good group that got out and did a lot of cleanup. And uh on multiple occasions uh in the community, people have been taking the advantage of this time to clean up in front of their houses or on their walks, which I want to thank all residents for for doing that. Uh we had two um, one, one volunteer in my district, Shawna Lake. Uh she was very happy to receive uh uh acknowledgement from the municipality. Uh she's been doing girl guides for over twenty one years and uh has a big impact on a lot of young women's lives here in the community. So that's all I have for now and I just want to wish everybody uh to be safe during this time. And I was happy to hear because I got a lot of call from residents and I was happy to hear today that Dr. Strang and the premier specifically laid out, if your cottage is not in your community, you're not supposed to go to your cottage. Um there was receiving a lot of phone calls from people telling me their neighbors are coming out to their cottages for the weekend and driving back to Halifax. Should they or should not be doing that? I'm glad it was spelt out today and I I hope that that alleviates uh anybody's concerns up there. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Garden Cole.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Um a few uh small things that I was doing uh this this month since we last met. Um that was C C O A by Zoom. Um they're getting closer to realizing their uh new facility and immunizing their uh members as well. Had the pleasure of delivering the volunteer recognition award to Diana Sted in our community, who is a uh who exemplifies uh what a community volunteer is all about. Um I reached out to Enfield and Bloom to see how they are moving forward this year after being dormant uh last season due to COVID. Um I've been receiving emails and calls from the residents regarding the new uh new development in Bakery Lane and also some renewed interest in getting a crosswalk uh put into the uh into the main uh central area in Enfield. Also, with Shirley's uh expedience, I presented a recognition certificate to a District One resident who turned ninety seven on the weekend and it happened to be my mother. So that was uh that was pleasurable for me for sure. And uh just wanted to mention as well, um there's some areas in this municipality that I won't say I didn't know existed, but I certainly wasn't familiar with. So I've been um, I've been driving around and getting familiar. And Keith, I happened to be up. My mother and I were up around. Now I know where Tenna Cape is and uh started out in Bramber and all along that area. We went the wrong, we came into it the wrong way, but we uh that's the road that we traveled for the first time. And uh Mount Uniac and South Uniac is going to be our next when the restrictions lift. I'll familiarize myself with that with that area as well. So thank you.
I just say Tenna Cape is in Counselor Green's district.
Oh, Counselor Greens. Okay. Well, I guess I better get that straight as well. Thanks.
Hey, Counselor Rhino, kind of split the shore there.
Okay. It's beautiful.
Anybody stunned.
Anything else, Counselor?
That's everything.
All right, then that concludes the business. And before I call for a motion to adjourn, I just echo some of the other uh comments. Stay safe, folks. Um how quickly things can change. I guess we just simply tried to do as the premier and the good doctor wish us to do. And hopefully that will flatten the curve very quickly and we'll get back to our previously enjoyed much safer status in Nova Scotia. So wishing everybody all the best. So next item would be to set the date and time of the next council meeting, May the eighteenth, twenty twenty one, regular meeting of council policy and May the twenty sixth for the regular meeting of council.
So move.
Move by councillor Green, seconded by councillor Musa. All those in favor?
I.
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 Contrary. Motion is carried. I would now be looking for a motion to adjourn.
So move. Seconded.
Move by councillor Perry, seconded by councillor Green. All those in favor?
I.
I.
We are adjourned.
Night, guys.